Call to order, April 22nd, 2014, Newcastle County Council Meeting. Let us stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Cartier?
Here.
Ms. Diller?
Here.
Mr. Hollins?
Here.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Reta?
Here.
Mr. Sheldon?
Here.
Mr. Smiley?
Here.
Mr. Street?
Here.
Mr. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Weiner?
Here.
Mr. President, the roll call reveals 13 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we now have approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes, meeting April 8th, 2014?
Motion to approve his distributive.
Hearing none, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Announcements from members of council tonight, any announcements? I will be making a presentation tonight when we get to the presentation section in our agenda. We'll now have introduction of ordinances. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the introduction of ordinances.
Substitute number one to ordinance 14-036 to appeal ordinance numbers 14-008, 14-009, and 14-010 approving Granville Streetlights for the Darley Green subdivision blocks A, B, D, E, 1, S, E, 2, B, 4, and I located in Brandy 100 and substitute and approve traditional streetlights in these previously listed areas. Ordinance 14-037 amend the grants budget for FY 2015 appropriate $1,826,202 from Department of State Delaware Division of Libraries to A, Library Administration, $84,680; B, Apoquimic Library, $123,947; C, Bear Library, $280,621; D, Claymont Library, $114,423; E, Brandy 100 Library, $269,098; Elsmere Library, $131,621; G, Hokkenson Library, $159,255; H, Kirkwood Library, $212,45, I, Newark Library, $276,329; and the J, Woodlawn Library, $167,183 to be administered by the Department of Community Services. Ordinance 14-038 amend the grants budget appropriate $87,722 in funds from the State of Delaware Department of Labor Delaware Workforce Investment Board to the 2014 State Youth Employment Program Grant to be administered by the Department of Community Services. Ordinance 14-039 amend the grants budget appropriate $205,375 in state grant and aid funds to the Absalom Jones Senior Center FY 2015 which funds will be administered by the Department of Community Services. Ordinance 14-040 amend the grants budget appropriate $2,217,205 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and $375,000 in estimated program income to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG FY 2015 to be administered by the Department of Community Services. Ordinance 14-041 amend the grants budget for FY 2015 appropriate federal funds of $789,739 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development an estimated program income of $100,000 to the Home Investment Partnership Program, HOME, as follows. Appropriate $48,560 to home administration FY 2015, $661,179 to home investment partnership and program home rehabilitation FY 2015, and $180,000 to home investment partnership community housing development organization, CHDO FY 2015 which grants and program income are administered by the Department of Community Services. Ordinance 14-042 amend the grants budget for FY 2015 appropriate federal funds of $179,469 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to the HUD Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG FY 2015 to be administered by the Department of Community Services. Ordinance 14-043 revise zoning map, Christina 100, southwest side Lorwood Avenue and north of Maryland Avenue, 0.10 acre from NC 5 Neighborhood Conservation to CN Commercial Neighborhood and to amend the comprehensive plan consistent therewith. Ordinance 14-044 amend Newcastle County Code Chapter 14 Finance and Taxation, Article 6 exemption from real property taxation, Section 1103 filing frequency regarding filing deadlines for the 65 or older and disability real property tax exemption.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I will now have reports from select and special committees, starting with the Finance Committee, Councilmember Smiley.
Yes, Mr. President, Finance Committee met upstairs today, 1:30 floor conference room. We discussed issues on this evening's agenda and approved a couple of grants.
Thank you. Councilmember Cartier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to update the budget hearing process for the fiscal year 2015 which are co-chaired by Councilman Smiley and myself, Wednesday, April 9th, we went over revenues, debt services, and contingencies. Monday, April 14th, we had our land use, General Manager presented their budget request for 2015. And Monday, yesterday, April 21st, the largest portion of our county government in terms of operation and revenue, Public Safety presented their budget on yesterday, April 21st.
Thank you, Councilmember Cartier. Community Services, Councilmember Hollins?
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon at 3 o'clock, we had a Community Services Committee meeting, we had a PowerPoint presentation by Carrie Casey, the manager for Division of Committee to Development and Housing, and that presentation was on the fiscal year 2015 Department of Housing and Urban Development Action Plan. Secondly, we had another presentation by Carla Thompson on the Absalom Jones Senior Center Program and Grant Presentation. So we had a very informative meeting this afternoon, and we will follow up with legislation in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Councilman Hollins. Councilmember Diller, you'd like to add anything?
I think the Councilman has covered it.
Thank you so much. Land use, Councilmember Tackett, Councilmember Reta?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, April 15th, we had a land use committee meeting at 3 o'clock, and we had one item on the agenda, it was the terminate and maintenance declaration for Atlantic Business Park, and part of this was already developed, this is just the other part of it, and it was down Penn Cater 100.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Tackett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this was my plan in the district, and we had the applicant come, and I explained pretty briefly, it's a pretty simple application.
Thank you, Councilmember Tackett. Technology Subcommittee, Councilmember Weiner?
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, the Technology Subcommittee met on April 15th at 1:30 PM in our eighth floor conference room. We discussed a new instant messaging system that's been brought online by our IS department, and there's a video available posted that will enable staff members to speedily give messages intra between employees of the county. We also reviewed a new land use department tool, technology, making the whole land use part of the county website more user-friendly.
Thank you, Councilmember Weiner. Today, the Executive Committee met, we had a very brief meeting, 10-minute meeting. We heard from Councilmember Kilpatrick on her reappointment to board from a member from her district, and we discussed resolutions for tonight. We move on now to consent calendar. Any member of the council or the public may remove an item from the consent calendar for further discussion by a simple request. If an item is not removed, it will not be subject to amendment, discussion, or other objection, will be voted upon as a package. Consent calendar items are noted on the agendas as such and published in the newspaper, and they are available in the back of the room. Is there anyone from council or the public who wishes to have an item removed at this time? Seeing none, is there motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As have the Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Resolution 14-100 honoring the achievements of Dr. Malveen Richard and the Sarah Pyle Academy. Resolution 14-101 reappointing Christopher Simon to the Newcastle County Ethics Commission. Resolution 14-102 congratulating Zachary Sterrett for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Resolution 14-103 congratulating Travis Sterrett for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Resolution 14-104 congratulating Andrew Ensley for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Resolution 14-105 commending Joseph H. Campista for 31 years of dedicated service to the Wilmington Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the consent calendar.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Ms. Diller?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Reta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, the roll call reveals 13 yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're asking Councilmember Street and Councilmember Protem Penrose-Hollins if they would join me in the front, and we're asking Dr. Malveen Richard if she would come to the front as well.
Councilmember Street is going to make the remarks.
Yes. The Pyle Academy was conceptualized initially under the Wise administration, and the relationship I had with the Wise administration at the time was so contentious that I just opposed anything but even one to this. So I have to admit that I opposed the Academy, and it's one of the very few things that I will admittedly say I was wrong about. It's an outstanding asset to the district, it's an outstanding asset to children. It made it through the Wise administration, made it through Dr. Lowery's administration, made it through the Law's administration, and I see Dr. Williams back there, thank you, Sarah, for continuing, it's very, very important. You know, the naysayers said that these high school kids would be running for the community and be doing this, that, and the other. There have been no complaints in the community about the behavior of the kids. Agencies like mine have benefited from them immensely because the kids have been placed in work studies at various agencies throughout the city, so it's a win-win situation. The kids are graduating, and these are kids who, numerically and statistically, were destined not to graduate and not to succeed. So I commend this district, I commend the school, and certainly I'm proud to be a co-sponsor in this revolution, commending you for your work and your success with kids who basically assisted from the town. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Honoring the achievements of Dr. Malveen Richard and the Sarah Pyle Academy. Whereas Dr. Malveen Richard has achieved national recognition for her work at Sarah Pyle Academy in the areas of dropout prevention and student development, and whereas Dr. Richard has demonstrated an intense passion for the education and development of the youth of Newcastle County by her tireless efforts to help them earn a high school diploma and to graduate, whereas her efforts in initiating and sustaining family engagement, developing alternatives for children alienated by traditional classrooms, establishing strategies that reach with high sustainability, students who have historically been at risk are unparalleled. The changes she helped implement within the Christina School District were systemic and thorough and designed to serve kids long into the future. Whereas Dr. Richard proved markedly successful in empowering and developing at-risk students, further her knowledge of what works and what does not work in teaching at-risk students is profoundly deep. Now therefore, be it resolved by and for the County Council of Newcastle County, the County Council hereby honors Dr. Malveen Richard and the Sarah Pyle staff and students for achieving educational excellence in the area of dropout prevention. Adopted by the County Council of Newcastle County for 22/2014, Dr. Chris Allen Bullock, President of County Council of Newcastle County, Admiral Metz. Amen. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[999.37]
and 1,000 students in the eight years. And while I have gone on to something else now, Dr. Williams, I've just took me to take me out of the school, uh, I'm still there for them and the work is continuing. Uh, just know that we've all said this before, a mind is a terrible thing to waste, but we save those students, we can continue and save more. Thank you so much for honoring me tonight.
Um, I'd like to ask you to come back and Mr. Barnes and his staff come down and join us.
That's nice.
Please. Quickly, quickly, quickly. So he'll hear that side of President's brick. He wanted one snuck in. I heard it. Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Street. Thank you, Councilmember Hollins. Would now move to agenda item H, consideration of resolutions removed from the consent calendar and other resolutions, R14-106. Mr. Tackett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution 14-006 into the record and present to County Council for consideration and possible adoption.
Second.
Resolution 14-106, to terminate a maintenance declaration for Atlantic Business Park Phase Two Tax Parcel Numbers, 1102300098, 100 through 104, PennCater 100.
Mr. Tackett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we discussed this in depth upstairs and, um, the reason that the declaration is being dissolved because now one owner owns it all. So therefore we needed, we didn't need the agreement between the different parties, so...
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions of council? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
R14-106 is approved. R14-107, Mr. Weiner?
Yes, I ask collectively that R14-107 and R14-108 be read by title into the record and tabled.
Second.
Resolution 14-107, request Newcastle County Council implement live and video on-demand video broadcast of all publicly advertised Newcastle County Council meetings. Resolution 14-108, request Newcastle County Council implement video on-demand broadcast of all publicly advertised Newcastle County Council meetings.
Thank you. Said resolutions are tabled. R14-109, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that R14-109 be read by title only and placed before council.
Second.
Resolution 14-109, approving the refund of taxes paid in error on parcel number 09030300249, Moody Place, New York, Delaware.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President. Briefly, this is a situation where, uh, taxes that were in arrears were paid by the mortgage company and then paid by the property owner in addition to the current taxes that we're due and owing.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Any comments or questions from council? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
R14-109 is approved. R14-110, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that R14-110 be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration.
Second.
Resolution 14-110, authorize the execution of one purchase order contract to the Environment
Systems Research Institute, ERSI, for annual software maintenance for various ERSI software for the Office of Technology in the amount of $46,412.33.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, this is an annual contract for basically, uh, software maintenance and backup support, uh, corrections and enhancements should we need it.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
R14-112 is approved. R14-112, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that R14-112 be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration.
Second.
Resolution 14-110, authorize the execution of one purchase order contract to the Newcastle Conservation District for Carousel Park Pond Drainage and Water Quality Improvements for the Department of Special Services totaling $187,200.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, this, this purchase order will, uh, will pay for the design permitting, administration, and construction necessary for the Carousel, uh, Park Pond, which includes a bark park, which I'm very happy about. Uh, it will include land regressing, fencing, and the installation of catch basins. And the, uh, dogs will now have their own concrete catwalk to the water so they don't mess up their little paws.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
R14-112 is approved. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance 14-027, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that 14-027 be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration.
Second.
Ordinance 14-027, amend the pay rates of pay for the unclassified temporary seasonal and part-time recurring employees of Newcastle County.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, this will take the minimum wage of Newcastle County from the current 7.25 to 10.10 an hour. Uh, mostly this will be part-time and summer employees. These employees do not benefit from the county's, uh, healthware, health programs or their pension. Uh, we did have a question arise during committee, and this does also apply to the summer youth that would be in the program. We get state funding to help support that, and the county would provide the difference in the state minimum wage and county minimum wage, and those funds have been calculated into the 100,000.
Thank you for that explanation. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
Ordinance 14-027 is approved. Substitute number one to ordinance 14-028, Mr. Sheldon?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that substitute one to ordinance 14-028 be read in by title only for its consideration and adoption.
Second.
Substitute number one to ordinance 14-028, amend the FY 2014 approved operating budget appropriate $445,000 to the Department of Special Services to cover the cost of snow removal.
Mr. Sheldon?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, thanks. Department of Special Services, the security cost of $445,000 over and above what the normally budgets for the snow and ice removal, this replenishes the fund that comes out of the stable, grant stabilization tax fund.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
Substitute number one to ordinance 14-028 is approved. Ordinance 14-029, Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that ordinance 14-029 be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Second. Ordinance 14-029, amend the grants budget appropriate federal grant award of $257,315 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Delaware Emergency Management Agency, DEMA, under the Department of Safety and Homeland Security to the Newcastle County Federal Fiscal Year 2011 Homeland Security Grant Program.
Mr. Bell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this particular ordinance, uh, will appropriate a federal grant, uh, award, uh, to properly account for the purchase of equipment and reimbursement of funds by the Delaware Emergency Management, uh, through the, uh, the state's Homeland Security Grant Program. Uh, the equipment and materials that will be purchased, uh, will be provided for the enhancement of video teleconference equipment for emergency management, uh, personal protection equipment, uh, for Newcastle County and the, uh, enhancement of equipment for Newcastle County Police Bond Squad, EMS, medical supplies, and an additional 23,000 will reimburse Newcastle County, uh, for equipment maintenance and training.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing, um, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
Ordinance 14-029 is approved. Ordinance 14-031, ordinance 14-032, ordinance 14-033, ordinance 14-034, ordinance 14-035, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that all the prior stated ordinance numbers be read by title only.
Second.
Ordinance 14-031, the annual revenue ordinance of Newcastle County for fiscal year 2015 beginning July 1, 2014. Ordinance 14-032, calculation of super service charges effective July 1, 2014 for fiscal year 2015. Ordinance 14-033, an ordinance authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in Newcastle County for the purpose of financing certain capital projects approved in the fiscal year 2015 capital budget. Ordinance 14-034, the capital budget ordinance of Newcastle County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014. Ordinance 14-035, adopt the annual operating budget of Newcastle County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, ordinance 14-0 through 1 through 14-0 through 5 are FY 15, uh, budget legislation pieces. They will all be discussed at the finance meeting immediately preceding the actual budget vote. In addition, any part of the council, this council budget presentations and/or legislation relative thereto will be subject to discussion by council at its May 14 and May 19 special meetings being called in order to discuss the budget. With that, I would make a motion to table ordinance 14-031, 032, 033, 034, and 035.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Ordinance 14-003, Mr. Weiner?
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, I ask that 14-003 and 14-020 remain on the table.
So be it. Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Item J. R14-113, Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, I request that, uh, Resolution Number 14-113 be read by title only and placed before council for its consideration.
Second.
Resolution 14-113, recognizing the contributions of the Newcastle County Council employees on this 2014 Administrative Professionals Day.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes, Mr. President, fellow members of council, first, I'd like to apologize for not having this out earlier. Uh, I had all my things to do, but unfortunately, there were other things that kept pushing it further down the things to do list in my life. Uh, I, I, so I apologize to council, but most of all, to the employees of Newcastle County Council. I would like your indulgence to read this into the record for a moment. Whereas the employees of Newcastle County Council serve as an important link between the council members, the administration, and the residents of Newcastle County, and whereas they are called upon to keep themselves informed and to have a working knowledge of many issues and processes inside of counties, state, federal, and various municipal governments. And whereas these professionals are often required to work irregular hours to assist both their councilperson and the residents of Newcastle County, which sometimes results in their being unable to attend events with their family and friends. And whereas without the loyal dedicated service of these professionals, the standards of Newcastle County and, and service to its residents would not be of the high level of expertise we have all come to expect and at times take for granted. Now therefore be it resolved by and for the county council of Newcastle County, the county council hereby recognizes on this 2014 Administrative Professionals Day the dedication and professionalism which all council employees put forth every day in their effort to do ser, to serve those that depend on them. And tomorrow is the actual Professionals Day. And thank you very much for all you do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Any, uh, comments or questions on this? Public comment?
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Bell?
I would like to, uh, ask to be added, and I'm sure other members of council, uh, couldn't agree more, uh, with, uh, what Councilman Smiley has presented and the words that he has spoke. Uh, we truly do have a team of professionals that support our officers and support the services to the citizens of the county day in and day out. So here, here to the resolution, and I would like to join.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Smiley?
Absolutely welcome, everyone. Again, I apologize previously, we've listed everyone, 'cause I've had the time to sneak around without the staff knowing this time, it just wasn't possible.
So everyone is listed already?
No.
No.
They are not. But everyone is welcome.
Alright, alright. Councilmember Cartier, you had your hand up?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, be listed on as a co-sponsor as well.
Anyone else? All of council duly noted. R14-113 is approved. We have, uh, another...
Did we vote it?
I'm sorry. Did you call a vote?
I haven't called a vote.
Called a vote. I saw the hand. Mr. President, for future reference, just because I introduce something doesn't mean I support it. Huh? Okay. I'll make a note of that. Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yeah.
Mr. Street?
That's kinda late.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, the Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
R14-113 is approved now. Thank you. Mr. Weiner?
Yes, I ask that Resolution -14-114 be read by title and placed before council for its consideration and adoption.
Second.
Resolution 14-114, honoring the life and legacy of Thomas Irvin Bear II.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes, uh, it's as per title, Mr. Uh, Bear was, um, taken from us recently. His wife served, of course, as Senator to Brandy 100, and, uh, his funeral is taking place right now as we meet, so this was added on, uh, in a fashion so that we could present it, uh, to his, um, to the folks that were attending the funeral this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. Cartier?
Yes.
Mr. Hollins?
Yes.
Ms. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Retta?
Yes.
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Street?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. President, the Roll Car Veils 13, yes.
R14-114 is approved. Anything on the item K? Councilman Cartier, do you have your hand up?
When you get to comment.
Alright, we're there.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment?
Uh, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, remember that today, April 22nd, is Earth Day. And I can tell you, uh, I was part of a generation, I think, that many of us in this room lived through a shift in mentality about the environment that, that we inhabit on planet Earth. And over the years, remembering that the first Earth Day was in 1970, over the years, we've made, as a country, enormous progress cleaning up the environment that we, the natu, we share with the natural world. And we have, if you think about it, made enormous progress here locally, uh, many, uh, water bodies that, uh, were really not in very good condition are in much better condition. I'm thinking primarily the Delaware River. Uh, the air quality's better. Our management of land and stewardship of land, as we go through our land, uh, use development code, is far better than it ever was. So we've made a lot of progress, but we have a lot more progress to make.